Okay, it is five thirty PM on the twenty second of February twenty twenty two. My name is Steven Jeskowicz. I'm the chairman of the town of Ledyard, permanent municipal building committee, and I call this special meeting to order. I want to emphasize this is a special meeting. So we have to kind of stick to the agenda. So with that, I'll start out with a roll call, but starting with myself, Steve Jeskowicz Chair.
Jerry Tominski member.
Gary Schneider member.
Kate Tappama Herb Board of Ed member.
Steve Munger.
John Martin. John Marshall Town Council.
Wayne Donaldson, Ledger Public Schools.
I see Dan, but I'm sorry about that. I was looking for Steve June, but Dan Hessler, ONG Industries.
Hey, hey, just let everybody know, Steve June did send me a note saying that he had had a, there was a death in the family and he was going off to deal with that. I believe he said it was his father. So anyway, we will, but I did tell him, you know, don't worry about it. See him next week. All right. So with that, let's go on into our agenda. Again, it is a special meeting. But who joined us? Actually, I was early. So on time, we have voting going on in the town tonight. For more work for the PMBC. So with that, let's move on into the agenda for tonight. The first item on the agenda is minutes approval from our meeting on nineteen January twenty twenty two. I'll entertain motions to approve those meeting minutes.
Second, Steve Munger.
All right. We have motion. I didn't get a motion on that when I got a second. Was someone like to make the initial motion first?
All right, I thought you did the most.
Paul Second, that.
All right. So Steve Munger has made the motion and it has been seconded by Mr. Tominski. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah.
With that, is there any discussion on the meeting minutes from nineteen January twenty twenty two? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty two, as written, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it and the minutes are approved. All right. Just a, just a quick note. We do have a meeting for those of you who didn't hear me earlier. Before we started recording, a week from today, let's see, when is our meeting, Lisa?
The ninth.
The ninth, because right, because the first of March is on a Tuesday. At that meeting, I'm going to have.
I'm sorry, the seventh, it's the seventh.
Seventh Monday, I'm sorry.
All right, I will have a problem with that.
Okay, that's our regular scheduled meeting. If you can't make it, send me a note, Jerry, separate, and we'll make sure we have a quorum for that. That meeting.
I, I, I won't be here for that meeting. So, you know.
All right. Any other members of the PMBC that have an issue with that meeting? All right, I think that we would still have a quorum for that then. One thing I want to just, if, 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 because we have five on board tonight. What, what I do, let me just count again here. I've got myself, I've got Steve Munger, I've got Gary, I've got Kate, and if Jerry's not here, we'll still have a quorum. But what I want to just state is that two people are going to speak at that meeting. Just let you know, I'm going to ask the Public Works Director Steve Maslin to talk to us about the roofs of the library and the town hall, the town hall annex. In addition to that, I also expect our new finance director to talk to us a little bit as well. All right, moving back onto the agenda. Let me just get my screen back in order here. All right, we got some bills to pay. But before that, we have a, we're on Roman numeral number five, item two, because item one is just kind of a header. This is discussion of possible action on the memo from Silver Petrocelli and Associates. This is removal of heat in the boiler room, and we talked about this at our last meeting. If you read through the attachment there, what this is, is basically the outline for, to be able to go out to bid to have this work done. Dan Hessler indicated that, I believe it was Dan indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, that Action Air did not even want to have any part of this. And because we don't want to extend out the contract any further. Is that correct, Dan?
Partially, in that they, they didn't tell me that they wouldn't do the work. They just told me that they didn't want to do the work under the existing agreement. The agreement's been open too long.
Right, understand that. And the issue here is that we don't, as a town, don't want to continue the existing contract. What we want to do is get this thing closed out so we can do this work as part of the project outside the scope of the ONG contract. So with that, Dan, Wayne Donaldson, is there sufficient information here provided to you that we could go ahead and put this out for, I hate to say forbid, but for quotes?
Yes, not a problem.
What do you think this is going to cost, Dan or Wayne, either of you roughly? Or actually, let's not discuss that in this meeting, because we don't want to squay any bids or inputs on this. But based on what you estimate the cost to be, Wayne, determine the appropriate, whether we have to go out to bid or just quote on this. We can always go out for quotes. If they're too high, then we have to go out to bid.
Correct. If it starts looking like it's going to be over the bid amount, then I'll just put up a bid for the next meeting that you guys can approve.
Right, the other piece on this is also the connections to the BMS. I know you have other work going on with the BMS, and you're looking at contracts related to maintaining that BMS. So you'll have to determine whether you want to include those connections to the BMS either as part of this work or to have those connections done as part of, you know, a more general maintenance bid. You know, with your BMS. So figure out how you want to approach that.
Okay, not a problem.
Wayne, do you have enough information here to be able to move forward with this?
I think so. And if not, I'll touch base with Steve and get any clarifications we need.
Okay, any questions in the PMBC? If you remember from our discussions over time, we have two rooms that still have an issue going on. And rather than keep chasing this thing, redesigning it, the, sometimes the simplest answer is there. The boiler room has got some heat in it that is going into the, you know, transferring, you know, to a nearby room. So by putting this exhaust fan in there, it's temperature control, we should be able to control the heat in the boiler room. The residual, you know, ambient temperature in the room, and that'll help deal with part of the problem. And the other thing is to add some additional heat to room one forty eight by supplementing the heat in there. And that will prevent the rooms around it from being over or under heated. Any questions for anyone in PMBC on this? And this is at Gallup Hill School, just if there's any question on that. All right, hearing none. So Wayne, there's no action here other than you're going to go up, put together some kind of a quote package and see where, where we stand. All right, the next, next items we have here are a couple, the last, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Dan Hessler, these are the final change orders. I did send you back signed copies. I have the wet ink copies of all the change orders during COVID that we never met face to face for. But these last few change orders are the outstanding ones to be able to close out Gallup Hill School. Is that correct?
Contingent on one of the items that we have on agenda here, which is whether or not the radon fan monitoring will be put to our agreement. If not, then indeed, these would close out the trade contract costs. And I would produce for the next meeting, the closeout of the CM contingency and bond and insurance adjustments.
And that, that'll be our final bill from you, right?
Right.
All right. So with that, looking at item three, actually item four here, we've got a couple of change orders that are not subject to that discussion. So let's go ahead and get those taken care of first. Last couple of meetings, we had some, this is going back to that door pole and brick wash change order. This is Rev two. There was an error in Rev one in our last meeting, so we tabled it to vote on. It now appears to be in order. This is a change order request two, two, seven, revision two. As you read through it, again, it takes care of that masonry wash that we're doing some, some partial reimbursement back to the contractor. And then the door pulls that we talked about in our last meeting. You'll see the back charge to Noble there. And in the end, this particular change order is a zero dollar change order because we're moving money within CM contingency. So I move that we accept change order request two, two, seven, R two. That motion's now made.
I'll second that, Marshall.
Seconded by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion on change order two, two, seven Romeo two? Hearing none, all in favor of proving that zero dollar change order, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Jerry Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it and that change order is accepted. Dan, I did not sign that one in the stack because it wasn't approved yet. I'll go ahead and get that signed and another scan off to you. All right, this is a change order request number two, three, zero, punch list item, add gym pads. If you read through there, you know, we went back and forth on the, the gym there. They had to redesign that pad. In this particular case here, this is being backed turned back to the trades contractor. So the dollar cost to us, you know, it's, it's you know, through the CM reimbursable, we had to redesign that to, which was way better than deciding to move the the basketball hoops and things like that. This worked out well. And just one before we approve this final, even though the work's already been done. Wayne, is that working out the way we expected?
Yeah, it's fine. It's just what was expected.
Okay, no problem there. All right. So with that, this is change order, zero dollar net change order request two, three, zero for punch list, add gym pads, and I move that we accept change order.
I'll second that.
Standing by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion of this change order? Hearing none on the change order, hearing no comments, all in favor of approving the change order as written, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it and that motion for the change order acceptance is approved. All right. So the next one on here, Dan, I want you to just discuss this change order request on the radon monitoring. When I went through there, I said, man, this is kind of a lot of money, eleven thousand dollars to install a sensor that measures looks like differential pressure. It says for radon pressure monitors. And did we ever get the answer? Are we monitoring this the same way at the middle school or was it a different design?
It's, go ahead.
There is no monitoring. There is no BMS connection to the fans at the middle school.
At either school.
Right. And I think I asked the question at the last meeting and the answer I got was that there's no code requirement to monitor those. Because it's a matter of you test for radon and then you mitigate it and but as far as the monitoring of that, there's, you know, there's no code requirement. So I think at our last meeting, Wayne, you were going, we had a discussion of whether this was needed. We were going to get the price on this. And having it, this is, this change order would bring us, take it all the way back to the BMS, so you would get an alarm in the event that those fans fail, correct?
That's correct. My understanding of it. I have no problem with keeping it separate from the BMS and doing a local alarm. You know, within the electrical room or someplace like that. There's not necessarily, you know, a good reason to have it tripped on the BMS.
Okay, yeah, it's not like it's like flooding or something. This is something that would take time to build up and all those kinds of things.
Right.
Dan, you had mentioned that this would affect whether we're ready to close this out or not. You know, it sounds to me, Wayne, as though you want to be able to monitor these to know whether they're running.
Yeah, because there's something that's not, the only way you're going to know this unless you're going up on the roof and inspecting the motors is when you do your test every three or four years. And they're random tests for the rooms. I think if there's, if they showed high levels, they have to be tested every three years as part of the three year schedule. So they could fail right after the test and be have radon in the building for three years. Right. Next test cycle.
All right. So let's step back away from the Gallup Hill Elementary change order in front of us here for a minute. Do, which schools have radon systems installed in them across the district?
Gallup Hill, Gales Ferry, the middle school, and Julie Alon.
All right. And do we monitor all of those systems today or?
No.
All right. It sounds to me like what you're saying here is you'd be okay with a less complex system that just basically powers going to the fan. You talking about power to the fan or you're talking about actual differential pressure?
I think just power to the fan. So I mean, the fan is, if, you know, we put an induction indicator on the power line to the fan and it goes off if it drops below a certain amperage or something, I'm fine with that.
All right. So, and, and again, and Dan Hessler, you're on the line here. If, right now, this is, this work has not yet started and they have not ordered the parts, correct?
That's correct.
So if we elect not to do through, through as the contract, you kill the change order request. We could then move down the path outside the project of just having this, having some type of a alarm light or, you know, audible alarm put in that would indicate that there's problem.
That would serve the purpose, as Wayne mentioned, you know, if, if you want to just make sure that you still have power to the fan, that the fan is drawing juice. You'd probably, you know, do much better than the cost proposed here.
Well, what I was thinking was for less than this eleven thousand dollars, we could probably take care of the middle school at the same time. And it'll put some monitoring on that.
Certainly.
Dan, or rather Wayne, does that sound?
Yeah, that's more than reasonable.
All right. So let's see what we can do outside the project on that. And then I guess the question I would ask for, for you to, to address with Board of Ed facilities outside this project is, you know, should you be monitoring that on the other schools or not? But that would be something you'd have to work out. Perhaps we could get some kind of an economy of scale if you were installing this in multiple buildings. And, you know, we'll kind of go from there.
Yeah, absolutely. The other ones would be simpler because they each have one location instead of having multiple fans. So I would definitely take advantage of that and that would come out of my budget and we would add it to it.
All right. And just for, for the PMBC members that are online here right now, does anybody have any issues with that approach of tabling or just canceling this change order request outright? And doing a, a less comprehensive project, you know, within the scope of our, our work from the town, but outside of the ONG contract. Okay, if nobody has any issues with that, let's move in that direction. So item number six, I guess is we're, we're tabling it, Dan, there's no action. I know you guys had to do some work to pump this out, but we'll go ahead and move on.
Understood.
Yeah, Dan, is that, that'll mean that every change order now is done, that you can move forward to final numbers and things for Gallup, the Gallup Hill School.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have to, do you have to close this out now? Because you do have the change order? Do we have to vote to close it?
It says discussion, discussion on possible action. I can just put in a thing consensus, consensus of commission to cancel change order and go outside the project.
Okay.
That's a nice.
Because it was still a change order request. If we had approved the change order, I think we would have to actually rescind it. But I believe, Dan, this is kind of like just proposed work, right?
Right. Okay. And the only comment to, to Lisa's note is that, you know, you may want to change your phrasing to say it's going to be within the project of the EMVP, but outside of the ONG agreement.
Then that, that's a little bit more clear. Lisa, please have the minutes indicate that.
Yep, got it.
Okay. All right. So we're now, we're down on payment of some invoices here. The first invoice that's on the, on the list there was one that we had a problem with, the attachment in our last meeting. So it's a Silver Petrocelli and Associate invoice from back in December. That date there should say twenty twenty one, not two oh one, but we're missing that little two, but I just want to make sure everyone knows what we're talking about. This is AIA application two, one, dash, two, seven, one, seven from SBA with Ledyard Middle School under their time materials contract. And that, that is a seven hundred twenty three dollar invoice. That invoice is in order. And I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Standing by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of proving that invoice as written, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Jerry Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it. That motion is approved. Okay, next we have, this is, this is AIA applicant, I'm sorry. Everybody good? Okay, this is AIA application. I'm going to finish with my computer open here, hang on. I think the internet's running a little slow. AIA application from ONG Industries. And this is for the Gallup Hill School. This is a partial invoice. Dan, did you want to explain on this one? Because it's only a four thousand dollar application payment. I'm kind of surprised we didn't just roll this in with next month. Do you want to add anything on that, Ben?
Sure. Provide some clarity in that we have resolved contract compensations and outstanding work with a number of trades, site work primarily. Greenwood Industries had some, some contract compensation changes that we got through. And then there was two other small McKenzie and, and the final cleaners that hadn't built their final invoice. So I generated this requisition just to close out those, those contracts. The, there's two contracts with still changes to come in the last invoice. But that's why I generated this one is those trades had been closed out and I didn't want to wait any longer as far as pushing their bill through. Also does not include any funds for ONG's general conditions. You know, conversation that the last submittal was, let's hold on to those funds, keep them for the, for the last invoice. So that's what I did.
Okay, that all makes sense. I can see the billing on here for Horizon stuff, nine hundred dollars, and then, you know, Greenwood negative seven thousand and things. So and I understand what you're trying to do. Number one, some of these people are owed some money and you can't pay it until we pay you. And then we'll see the final numbers close out in our next, our next invoice. All right, this application for payment, by the way, has been countersigned by Steve June on the second of February twenty twenty two. It's in order in the amount of four thousand one hundred and seventy two dollars and nine cents and application number thirty six. With that, I move that we make payment.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving application number thirty six from ONG, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it, and that application is approved. The next number ten and eleven are both Silver Petrocelli and Associates invoices, again, under their time materials contract. For Gallup Hill School and Ledyard Middle School, I'll do them individually. Those invoices are in order. And we should be down to maybe another month on them and just be done. Once we get that final AIA application from ONG. So this is AIA application two, one, two, nine, zero, three from Silver Petrocelli and Associates for the Gallup Hill School dated one, January twenty twenty two, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. And with that, I move that we make payment.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Jerry Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it. Thank you. That motion is approved. Next, as number eleven, AIA application two, one, two, nine, zero, six for Silver Petrocelli and Associates for the Ledger Middle School. Also dated one, January twenty twenty, in the amount of five hundred fifty dollars and twenty five cents. That invoice is in order and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it. That motion is approved. All right, now we're on to, we're done, Dan Hessler, with the ONG related stuff. You're welcome to sign off if you like. But it's public meeting, so you can stay on if you like. Also, discussion of possible action on audit preparations, RFP. Okay, a few months back, we started talking about doing a, a closeout prep project where we would have a contractor assemble the body of evidence to, to streamline and cut time off of our audit. You know, we're not doing the audit for the state, but what we're doing is we're going to put the audit package together for them and hand it to them on a silver platter to say, hey, everything's in order, everything is documented, everything is indexed. Here's all the documents you need on a couple of DVDs and let them have it. You know, I've gone back and forth, Marshall Hancock worked with me on this toward the end, and then now a new finance director's had a chance to look at it. Finance director would like to release that later this week. We've got a few dates to fill in still on that. But we're going to, again, take a look at those dates, but now you had a chance to look at that. With the exception of putting in appropriate dates based on when we can get this thing advertised, which are highlighted in yellow. The scope of the project is here. One last thing I'm going to ask, and Lisa, if you could get this back over to Matt, is the Office of School Construction Grants is actually now has a new name because they've been realigned from DAS to another name. So wherever we say Office of School Construction Grants, or we could say, or follow on organization. Because we can't say you need experience in the current organization because they don't, no one's done any projects. So we ask in here for minimum qualifications that you, you know, you've helped coordinate and manage some projects in the past. This is a lot of work for a committee of volunteers to try to do. And someone that's used to what they're asking for will be able to turn this around. I'm hoping we'll get at least three bids, but you know, it's possible only get one or two and need a bid waiver. But we're going to go ahead and put that together. The only other item is we also, Lisa, if you just make a note, we, we had to put dollar signs in front of all the the dollar values in section two. But other than that, the only thing for the committee to do here is just basically to approve, to release the RFP. We'd like to get it out later this week. What we're looking at is to give everyone about three or four weeks to be able to submit their proposals back to us. And then we'll, we'll put in the dates of the interviews and things. Once I work out when we will actually be able to release it. So we think three weeks is enough time, maybe four weeks for them to respond. And, you know, there's no holiday, you know, holidays or anything. So we think this is going to be able to be done. And we'll get sealed bids and see where we go. So at this point here, does anyone have any any questions before we, I guess at this point here, what we'd be doing is just voting to approve the release of the RFP with minor administrative changes. Okay, so with that, I move that the PMBC authorized the town finance director to release the RFP queue, or request for proposals and quotes for the school project closeout and audit prep. It's town number two, zero, two, two, dash, ten. The motion's now made.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Tominski. And again, we're not committing any money to anything except to advertise at this point. Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of releasing the RFP, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
All right, with that, the eyes have it. All right, rolling back into our agenda, getting back on here. All right, the next item we have here is funding for the Ledger, and Gary, I do know I got you running out of ten minutes. So this is the high school auditorium. You know, Kate, as a, between you and Steve Munger, if one of the two of you want to just give a quick overview of the history on this, the need for this and where the funds are, are coming from and the timeliness that we need to do this.
I'll defer to Steve. He's the chair of facility.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I really don't have much insight on this project at all, to be honest with you. But I can research it and get back to, to the next meeting if that's okay.
Would, would you like me to help you, Steve?
I absolutely would. I don't remember any notes on it.
With your permission, Steve Jeskowitz?
Yeah, go right ahead, please.
Okay. Basically, the sound system, existing sound system in the auditorium is iffy when it works. The lighting is no longer the standard. And there are issues also with the lighting. The curtain has many ripped and shredded areas. It's been years since that has been replaced. This is to do an upgrade of the electronics, the lighting and the curtains and the stage floor and the auditorium. Funding is coming from the Board of Education, CNR, Capital Nonrecurring Fund. That was approved in the last budget, so the funds are in place, ready to go. We're trying to get this out so we can get bids back for this project to go through this summer.
Okay, just quickly. So when it was approved in the budget, was it approved specifically for this project?
Yes, it was approved for funds for the curtains, funds for the stage floor and funds for the electrical renovations and sound system.
Okay. And has this project now been approved by town of Board of Ed facilities before we go out to bid?
It was. It was approved originally by the Board of Ed at the time the budget was approved.
Yeah, it's part of the capital plan, right?
Yes.
All right, so my question, now, obviously awarding the work and taking bids is two different items here. So um, uh, Kate, are you confident that Board of Ed Facilities is um. Uh, is comfortable with the uh, R F P is the question.
Yeah, I, I believe so. We, we've certainly discussed it. Um, there, there's been questions asked. We even went into discussion about. Um, some previous, um, oh, how do I say this? There, in the past, there had been some discussion of whether parent involvement might be appropriate. And we discussed the fact that we really want this to be handled as a, a proper project. Um, and, and you know, we're talking about the structural integrity of the stage. So that needs to be handled appropriately and we discussed the, um, you know, the age of the curtains. So yeah, I, I think that we've come through this and we're. Um, we're ready to stand behind the, this project being completed.
And there was nothing on here that will deal with structural integrity of the stage, that's separate, correct?
Well.
Yes, and I've, I've had a structural engineer who's come in and looked at that. Um, and with the exception of the two wings that were added at a later date, um, the struck, the um. Stage is structurally sound. He said there was no need to do a formal analysis or anything like that.
Okay, so none of this equipment will affect any of that?
No, actually nothing, none of that equipment's going on the physical stage.
Right, it hangs from the ceiling.
Correct.
Okay, uh, all right, and my last item on this here is that um. I know inside this list, I look at the uh, the work and things. Um, and I'm trying to find it where it talks in here. Uh, are they allowed to propose? Um, my only concern is with supply chain issues and everything else going on is the availability of these are very, very specific items. Um, I, when, when I look at it and read it, it tells me that the um. I don't know if it's drama department or what department, uh, that the, the people that are, that know this stuff are, were involved in putting this together. Uh, is there any, with supply chain issues and things, I understand that the need to get this out working quickly. And we did look at this once before, cause I remember all the stuff in here about the London architect, you know, the design files and things. Are we comfortable that this stuff will all be available so we can get good competitive bids?
We're gonna ask for alternates, uh, that's going to be an option. Uh, if it's not in there, I will add that, um, as long as they meet the same basic specifications. Uh, but no, we're not sure, you know, what is going to be available or what's not. Uh, I've got radios now for the schools that I've had on order since last May. That they're still waiting for antennas for.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about is very specific items and things, and if you need A to make B work, but we'll see what we get back for bids. Um, and again, similar to the other R F P we just talked about, there are some yellow, um. X X X areas in here that would need to be filled in. I'll call those administrative dates and items. Um, so with that, everything else, you know, appears to be in order and um. We'll uh, we'll go ahead and get uh, get some bids. The other thing is the date needs to be updated on uh. From July to a, a, a new.
Okay.
All right, uh, so with that, um, uh, I move that we authorize uh, the. Board of Ed Facilities Director to move forward with the Ledermoss High School R F P Auditorium Stage Renovation Project. Seconded by Ms. Toppamaher, any uh, discussion? All right, again, I didn't want to discuss how much money was set aside uh, to maybe influence any bids, but we'll take a look at that versus the budget when those bids arrive. Um, so all in favor of approving the uh, release of the R F P, certified by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica, it's I.
Your Timmy's V I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Toppamaher, I.
Steve Munger, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, and that's approved. Okay, moving on to uh, Roman numeral uh, number eight. Discussion of possible action on town municipal roofing projects to include the Bill Library, Town Hall and Town Hall Annex. Um, on this particular item, I'll be sending a note off and Lisa help back me up here, uh, asking Steve Maslin from the uh. Uh, who's our town engineer, uh, who scoped these projects originally to turn them over to the town council, to turn them over to us. Um, to uh, give us a um. Uh, you know, discuss this project with us. So we'll put that on the next agenda, please. Um, and although the money has been uh, voted on in a town meeting. Uh, we've got to look at the approach and the dates that the town wants and that and get that out. And that, those are relatively simple roofs with shingles and things on them, and there is some solar uh, elements to that as well. We want to make sure we capture all of that. The uh, and then lastly, there is a, the solar that's up there now is under like that long-term solar lease, and we had to figure out what the. What are the impacts on the project? You know, what's paying for the removal of those, and you know, even if we sell them. Cause they have some useful life, um, there's going to be a deficit there, I think, and we have to talk about that. At our next meeting, uh, at the beginning of March. I have no, no information, um, and Lisa, if you saw something I didn't see, I have not seen anything that turns over. Uh, any wastewater treatment plant, uh, modifications at the Highlands to the P M B C.
Yeah, there was a letter, um. From the council. In my pile.
I usually get those.
Date of February ten, twenty twenty twenty, that one, twenty-two. Um, dear Mr. Jack, Jessica, it's at its regular held on February ninth, the town council took the following actions. Referred the Highlands wastewater treatment plant sewer feed pump system replacement project to the P M B C.
Hmm, I did not get a copy of that. Could you send that copy to me that, please? All right, thank you. All right, uh, summer school projects, Wayne, uh, this is Roman numeral ten, I believe that you. Pretty much gave us a closeout on that at our last meeting. I don't think, are you considering the summer projects done?
Uh, yeah, I'm considering those done and I'm just looking to um, get the okay same policy to proceed with the. Ones for this year because we've already uh, ran into some problems with. Uh, getting projectors, so we're not going to be able to do classrooms this year. But some of the other projects, we want to start moving forward to, to make sure we can get materials.
Roger, all right, let us know as you move toward on that. Lastly, Roman numeral eleven, discussion of possible action on the roof solar projects at the Gales Ferry School, Juliette Long School and the Central Office for the Board of Ed. Uh, those three projects, um, and uh. Are being voted on today in the town, so we'll see how that turns out uh, at eight P M tonight. So there's no action for us to do, other than if you haven't voted, you live in the town, go vote. And then uh, just a question on it though, uh, Wayne, the, any state reimbursement on roofs, the central office would not be part of that, correct?
Central office would receive fifty percent of the um. Reimbursement that we would get on the other projects, so we would get about thirty-one percent reimbursement.
Now, is that, the fact that it's, the, it was previously a, uh, you know, half. Parks and Rec, half central office?
Then it would not have been at, at all.
Okay, so now that it's, all right, cause the last time when it was built and everything up to now, it was multi-use and I knew it wasn't eligible for that kind of money. But now because it's one hundred percent Board of Ed.
Yes, it's, it's eligible.
Right, great, okay, um, so what I expect to happen is after uh, this vote and our next meeting, we'll have a, a discussion of that. If um, you want to put together, uh, Wayne, a rough timeline on what you think we need to do for this, cause I presume we want to get the work done this summer?
I don't think we're going to get it done this summer. I've talked to people and they're saying that the material's just not available.
Okay, then uh, we'll still move forward and get the, it's only going to cost more money in the future, the more we wait.
Yeah.
Uh, and then lastly, just a general note to the, to the committee, if you follow the stuff in the newspaper lately. Um, there's a lot of stories being written about, um, projects that were not put out to bid within the state. Um, I'm not going to comment on whether that, you know, they're valid stories or not. The only thing I just want to comment on is the importance of. The, the processes that we need to go through for these projects that involve state money or even just town money. Ensuring that we're properly bidding projects to ensure that uh, they're being awarded to the um. In the case of most projects to the lowest qualified bidder, uh, you know, and then a professional projects after a careful review of all the qualifications and the costs. Um, that, you know, these, you know, the, the, the P M B C has done a great job of doing that. Um, throughout the, the process and um, we just want to continue to do that. So if no one has any comments, questions or anything, um, that's all I have for tonight and I.
Steve, you still there?
I'm here.
Project, if we can't, if that is, that roof and solar system is going to referendum tonight. And we cannot get the material for a year or more. Is the referendum still good?
I believe so, because the referendum authorizes the town to bond the money. Um, and that's what the key is here, is we need permission to bond the money from the town, uh, and because of the cost.
Is there a doubt in it, though, I guess is my question.
There is doubt, there is a dollar value in it. In fact, let me bring it up real quick, um, from the town, if I have it available.
Yeah, it's like six point seven.
Million, something.
Yeah, and, and, and we, we have to do it within that cost. Um, and in the event of, you know, the bids back and the costs are higher, we would have to go back. If it's a, you know, more than a certain amount, we would have to go back out to either change the scope of the project. Which is allowed inside the um, you know, if roofing costs get astronomical and crazy. Um, it's possible that we would have to say, hey, we can only do Gales Ferry School and Julie W. Long School, we can't do the central office. Um, within the, and we'd have to go out and get more money for that, um, so there's. You know, the, the way that referendum was written is the town council can change the projects around. Because right now with um, the cost of labor, inflation and everything, there's an awful lot of tremendous unknowns here in, in any project.
That's right, I was just curious what, cause it's wide open.
Yes.
Going to happen here.
Will, and we'll decide tonight whether the taxpayers of Ledermoss, um, want to do these projects or not, and go from there.
Good enough.
Okay, anyone else have anything tonight? If not.
No, I'm just going to be cheeky and say we should go check the five gallon buckets that are collecting the rainwater in the attic of the uh, schools over there in Gales Ferry.
Uh, well, that's not being cheeky, it's being honest, um, and I'm hoping that um, the town sees the um. Uh, you know, the fact that these are, 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 are older buildings that need roofs, um. You know, the roof is over twenty years old on the uh, Gales Ferry School. I believe that Julie W. Long School uh, roof is actually older.
It's like twenty-eight.
It's a different design, it's a flat roof, um. And uh, the, because of the design change of the roofs, um, it'd be interesting to see how in the bids come in on those. But the uh, the fact of matter is that um, this is the cost of doing business and having buildings. Um, and they need to be properly maintained and roofs are important because when roofs don't get replaced. And they develop leaks, it creates all kinds of other problems and more cost in the end.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so we will um, see what happens with the town tonight. Hopefully this will be approved. All right. Nothing else, uh, Gary, you're off by six fifteen as promised, and I'll see everyone in about two weeks.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.